Another sometimes boxes don't get checked or things don't get brought over properly. And what resulted was that there were some supplements that employees were receiving that did not get added to the new. Uh paycheck system, the new financial system and Ms. Barker was one of those, but what came to surprise me is that Ms. Barker. No, what what was a shock to me, a surprise to me was that Ms. Barker was receiving a supplement at all and I think. This hill will tell you, we were up in my office and we were celebrating a party or something like that and we were eating and. And I'm telling this hill, well, this marker doesn't receive a supplement. She's like, yeah, that's what she does. And so what I what I come to find out was that she was receiving a supplement from the community supervision and corrections department. About approximately thirty six hundred dollars a year. So those are not county funds. Those are state funds. That I believe uh prior to me becoming judge uh were implemented uh in the previous administration, Judge. For one of her coordinators and I believe that the county court at law also receives the exact supplement uh Judge Winters does. And that happened probably ten years ago or more. And so uh each year as I'm setting my uh budget. Uh I am trying to make sure that my employees are paid equally because they do equal type work. And I don't want one over the other. So that's been my my intent uh all along. So it came as quite a shock to me that. One of my employees was receiving about almost four thousand dollars uh a year more than the other one, when in fact the other one was doing the work. That would come, you know, that would be related to the community supervision and corrections department. So um I'm seeking uh your uh forgiveness for me not. Not being aware of that. Uh this might be the first time that elected officials come to you in Van Zandt County and said. Uh I'm making, I've got someone making more money than I thought they were making rather than, hey, give my people more money. So the way I wanted to correct that was not asking you to increase my budget. Uh but rather to uh allow me to seek permission for me to move that from another part of my budget. Basically, I'm gonna take that same amount of money that she's receiving annually and give it to my other coordinator, but I'm not asking for an increase in my budget. I'd be taking it out of my indigent uh legal defense fees for our very conservative and due to our contract system that was approved by the commissioners for. Several years ago, we've been, we've been saving money uh year over year uh in that line item. So I'm just asking for permission to move. Approximately thirty six hundred dollars from indigent legal defense uh fees into personnel so that I can ensure that. Uh my other coordinator is paid the same as my civil coordinator and also the coordinator for uh Judge uh Winters. Make sense?
Yes, sir.
Any questions?
Oh, sir.
Is there a motion?
I'd support a motion. I'd make a motion to approve the the transfer.
All right, is there a second? Well, I'll second it. Uh is there any further discussion?
I'll say, I I I understand what you're saying, Chris, that. I know Joe's done this, or I guess Joe's tried to do this before. Where he would like to increase salaries for deputies. Because he has extra money left over from his others and we've always said no. And, you know, I think if we do this, it sets a precedent that everyone can do it. And the next question is, is. Why is one coordinator getting a supplement and the other is not?
So that's what I said in the very beginning, ten years ago or more, Judge Drum with the Van Zandt County Director of Probation. Sought to get a supplement and increase in fines and receive that supplement from the probation department. That has been, that was been given to the uh civil coordinator, court coordinator for the district court prior to me even taking the bench. So when I came in two thousand nineteen and been studying my salary ever since, I've been submitting equal amounts to both my coordinators. I was unaware that that supplement was still being given to her.
Why don't you split that supplement between them?
Matter of fact, I already have, already have. But what it what it seeks, what really does though is it results in lessening the pay. Of the coordinator. She's been receiving this amount for the last going on six years now. And so by taking it away from her, it's almost gonna be a punishment and I don't wanna punish her. And that that would ultimately result in both of them being paid less than what you're paying the county court law coordinator. Cause she's receiving the same amount from the county and she's receiving that full amount of the salary supplement. So what I've done. Is I've I've already directed the probation department to send over a pay memo to both auditor's office and to Mr. Bill. Uh s- splitting that, separating till they each receive about eighteen hundred. So now, one, one is making eighteen hundred dollars more, the other one's making eighteen hundred dollars less. And so if the court would approve this today, then I'm gonna give eighteen hundred to both of them and that's gonna give them both back up to. To what would be equal pay uh and equal with a lower quarter. And so I, and so Commissioner Barton, I don't really see this leftover money. This is, this is not money at the end of the year that I said, I've been so conservative and I've saved this. So now I ask that you give me the, you know, discretion as an office holder to see how I wanna deviate up. This is money at the beginning of the year and well, here we are in what's third, third week of October, fourth week of October. This is money that is not leftover. This is money that I've already budgeted, that you all have already approved for indigent legal fees. But because we have a contract system, because we've been conservative in that, each year I've been beating that budget by a lot. So it's not leftover money. It's money that I've been saving year over year. And I'm not asking to spend money from last year's budget.
So so I understand correctly, for ten years now, this one employee is.
No, no, sure. She came, she came with me in two thousand nineteen. That position for more than ten years. Has been receiving that. I I believe it came with uh Ms. Kathy Jackson and she, she was uh Judge Coaches's. Coordinator and she made the move upstairs uh whenever Judge Kirkpatrick came into office and she moved positions. She moved upstairs and I believe that that salary supplement was given to her at that time. So that had to be probably four years or more before I came into office. And I've been there almost six now, but that one position has been receiving that supplement annually from the probation department. These are, you know, statements. And so if you're wondering, and I'm sure you are, why, why can't I just get thirty six hundred more from them? Well, I I called and asked and they don't have it. So before even asking you to do that, I called over and asked. Ms. Burns from probation department, do you have an additional thirty six hundred that I can locate to a to another criminal court? They don't have it. So plan B was um seek permission to to reutilize money in my budget. Again, if you're not increasing the overall budget and I've and I've told what my coordinators that, you know, budget time next year, this may not be approved, you may. You may just be getting a split supplement and you may get lower salary next year, or if the commissions court gives an increase. Your increase might not be as big as some of the others in the county.
This other position that we just found out was not receiving the supplement, that didn't make it less than the other two core coordinators all along.
Unbeknownst to me for almost six years. Because it wasn't part of the county budgeting system. It wasn't, it wasn't information I was getting from this hill and going through my my uh. Budget, budgeted funds and and presentation to the court. If you go back and you look, since two thousand nineteen, my my. Coordinator's been making the exact same money every year. And because of this change in the financial system, that's when I became aware of, she says, hey, I didn't receive all of my money. And this hill said, well, you know, there's a sup- it was a supplemental issue. That's when I was like, okay, I I I don't get a supplement. I've never received a supplement in the district judges, you know, budget. And that's when I became aware that probation department was sending that money over directly to the H R department. And that's been, you know, on the books for ten years. So if you don't approve it, that's that's fine. Obviously, that's within your discretion. I just go tell my one coordinator, have you, you've been receiving more money than I thought you were receiving. So you've kind of received this money for this time, but now you're gonna, you're gonna receive less.
You know, I would have, I would have uh reservations if if the if if the judge. Uh came to us asking for increases in his uh budget, you know, year on year, but when I don't, I don't think that it's a good um. Direction for the commissioners court to go to penalize uh, you you know, especially in today's. Uh employment market and today's financial system, when, when he's done everything he can do, in my opinion. Uh to keep costs down, uh especially considering indigent defense. Uh I think it's a very reasonable request to ask for uh an employee who who. Uh you know, in some respects may not have been treated equally uh to to receive. The ability from the commissioners court, we shouldn't just have rules for rules sake, but we should, we should have rules. Uh in place, uh you know, to to kind of harness things. And in this particular case, I don't think anything needs to be honest. It's already in his budget. He has the ability to uh uh, you know, to make this kind of a request and. And I think that it is our responsibility to approve this kind of a request when it stays within the same budget and he's not. You know, he's not coming back asking us for additional money. Well, basically the supplement ended. Is that, is that what you're saying?
No, no, the supplement continues and the supplement at this point has been divided and had equally. Me anticipating that I told my coordinators, this this request to the court may not be approved. I'm not gonna continue to to give one the entire supplement. So we've already directed that that supplement be split. And so one of my coordinators is receiving eighteen hundred dollars more a year than what. I had told her she was gonna be making because I was unaware the supplement and the other one. Who was getting it, but I was unaware is gonna is receiving eighteen hundred dollars a year less. And so it's split. So if you, if you deny it today, then they still, they both receive a supplement. That supplement has been divided by two. Whereas your county's court law coordinator receives the full supplement. If that's what Judge, if that's how Judge Winters has allocated. And he, and who knows? I I don't know. Maybe, maybe he hasn't allocated it that way. I'm not sure, but. Um, so if you don't, if you don't approve it, I I understand if you don't, I understand, you know, Commissioner Barton's point. Uh if you don't, then then that's, that's what it is and we'll accept that. We'll we'll respect the decision of the court. And I'll, you know, tell my coordinator, you're still receiving more money than what I, you know, requested you to have. You're still receiving more money. You're just not receiving what you have been used to getting and have been receiving for six years.
Regardless of how this turns out, I wanna compliment you for sticking up for your employees.
I'm with you, Chris. I I agree. I understand your point. But I want you to understand mine too. The problem I have with it is this happened before with with sheriff. Where we couldn't fill a position or two and it was in his budget as those positions. He's like, well, you know, these aren't getting filled. Let me give my, these guys, take this money, cause it's in my budget. I'm not raising my budget. And give this to them and we've always said no. He goes, we need to, we've always said, come to budget season and we'll redo it. And so it seems hypocritical for me to say yes to you, but say no to Joe.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, like sign. Dan? All right, motion fails. All right, uh I don't remember set, oh wait, we have to uh uh go back to the fire marshal for something. Item number five.
Your honor, in looking at the uh government code sections that gun. Burn bans specifically breaking two point oh eight one. Um the the court can impose the burn ban as it's done if the court makes a finding that circumstances present in all of part of the county incorporated. Area of the county created public safety hazard that could, that would be exacerbated by outdoor burning. Um but also the burn ban has to be for specified period of time. And the fire marshal may lift the burn ban. Only if he is designated to have that authority in the motion. So that's what I wanted to correct the motion first gave him the authority and then. You know, thought you didn't need to do that. Um if you want him to be able to lift it. You have to designate him as a person who can lift it. But you also have to state a specified period of time that has to be less than ninety days.
Well, most of them done gave him the ability to lift it, but we did not set a time. You are correct on that.
And you wanna modify your motion?
How long you think you need it for?
I did for sixty days at least.
Sure.
Or or you did not, you know, it it says up to ninety, you do ninety and if need be, so.
I would say sixty. I mean, surely we'll get, this is October, sure, we'll get rain October, December. Yeah, I mean, I hope we do. Heck, jeez.
Okay, we we can do sixty and then uh have a. Hopefully we're lifted in thirty days.
I'm modify sixty, you.
Okay, motion has been modified to uh the the burn ban sixty days from today's date. Uh and all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign. All right, so we got it. We got it, Fred. Thank you, Tana, for looking that up. Uh item number seven, discuss and consider milestone payment. Uh number seven, three, four, four, zero, zero, eight, two, and seven, three, six, one, seven, three, A to Saber Industries.
Yes, John, I'm the owner. We have Barry here playing if you are. We can hear Barry.
Hey.
There we go.
Okay, good morning. Um yes, I wanted to uh. The first invoice, seven, three, four, four, zero, zero, eight, two. Um that is for uh completed work at the precinct one tower site. Um over in the Grand Celine area. And those milestones were for the shelter and compound completion and the installation of the generator. That has been um verified and so I have um. That work has been completed by Saber and then on the second invoice, seven, three, six. One, seven, three, A, that is for the precinct three site, which is over in the Will's Point area. Um that is for three milestones, uh the first being the erection of the tower, which is complete. The tower and compound completion, which is also complete, and then also the installation of the generator. All these things have been completed. And uh we have inspected those and uh my recommendation is for those invoices to be paid. And any questions you may have, I'm happy to to answer um those.
All right, is there a motion to approve the uh milestone payments? Is there a second? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Uh all those opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eight, discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to sign a quitclaim deed. For property abandoned by Van Zandt County through the commissioners court meeting of February sixth, two thousand eighteen. And when I, when I looked at the uh, the motion or the uh what was passed where they abandoned it, there was nothing in there. To uh authorize the judge to sign a quitclaim deed. So I'm bringing it back. Uh now to uh authorize the judge to sign a quitclaim deed, abandoning that property.
What property is that?
Uh it is the uh. This right away right here that was never. Used. County did not modify or did not uh. Take care of it.
Is this the track that it came out of originally, do you know?
I don't know.
Did the minute say who is leaving this?
The minute says, discuss and consider partial streets and alleys abandonment in Myrtle Springs block fifty. Or forty-eight, fifty-two, and fifty-three. Surveyor Dennis fought, spoke, he stated that the property has never been used and it is abandoned. Commissioner Milton has inspected the property and confirms the abandonment motion to approve by Commissioner Milton. And seconded by Commissioner Brown. All voted in favor.
I'll motion table until, until I can look into that. It's in precinct three now. I'll have to kind of see what's going on.
All right, there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, uh any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed like sign, motion passes. Uh item number nine, discuss and consider resolution to reappoint Judge Andy Reese to the Andrews Center Board of Directors for a two-year period through. Uh ten, thirty-one, twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to. Hold you, reappoint you.
Second.
All right, motion made, second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Thank you. I very much enjoyed that position. Item number ten, discuss and consider approval of the twenty twenty-four tax roll. As provided by the Van Zandt County Appraisal District. And this is the final uh tally that uh. Uh they came up with, which was uh twenty-three. Twenty-three million, seven hundred sixty-six thousand, six hundred ninety-five dollars and forty-six cents. So we just have to approve that. That's after all the adjustments and all the things that uh then they do uh. At the end. Is there a motion to approve the tax roll?
Motion to approve.
Second, person.
All right, motion made, second. Are there any further, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Ms. Sandy, you concur.
I did um, now there's something in what the budget for monthly he is, is right at six hundred thousand dollars. And I did contact this writers and she sent me an email that did verify what Judge was talking about. It is the values of the protest that have been resolved. And so um. I realized that six hundred thousand basically that we did not get budgeted in our budget. But what will have to happen is as we uh get further into the year, get closer to the end, if. If we see an overage in that line, the current tax lady. The court does have the discretion to increase the revenue line and increase expenditure line, but I would not. Suggest you do that right now because this is, this is a consistent. It's a, it's nothing that that happens. And I looked at the revenue that's close to the initial income for this money will finish the revenue collections and.
Our budgeted collections.
So. Taxes were collecting about ninety-five percent out there, so which is a little bit low than what we'd been interested. It can be a a direct, it can be adjusted at the end of the year if we say anything.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number eleven, discuss and consider changes to Van Zandt County subdivision rules and regulations.
Uh yes, our judges is uh from our workshop that we've had on uh. Some of the exemptions in our, our subdivision guidelines. And we can't change those guidelines without a public hearing. So. I put this on here so we could schedule a public hearing of within thirty days to let the public come tell us. So we can share with the public what we're thinking about doing and they can offer any of their, their thoughts at that time. So. I would like to make a motion that we schedule that public hearing for a regular court that's on December the fourth. Sandy, does that, uh, do you normally put that in the paper, that, or who does that? This, uh, Tegan, would I give you plenty of time to get that uh thirty day notice in the paper? So I make a motion, we have that public hearing on December the fourth. During a regular session.
All right, motion been made uh by uh Commissioner Pearson and seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? To schedule a public hearing for December the fourth. All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number twelve, discuss and consider approval, true estates plat located in Van Zandt County Road. Twenty-seven, eighteen, and precinct two.
Yeah, the, in this particular uh instance, we, uh after having reviewed this, all these trucks. Uh they're basically keeping one, they're, they're subdividing out uh three others. Uh they have county road uh frontage and they're all over one acre. Uh they have complied with um all the requirements, uh required number, copy of plats are provided. Uh and uh the fees have been paid and the, the title owners are the ones that are asking for this. So. I'd ask the court to approve this uh this subdivision here.
Uh, would you add for filing purposes?
Sure, absolutely.
I'll second it.
All right, then then you make the motion. Okay, I'm sorry. All right, motion made by Commissioner Williams and seconded by Commissioner Barton. Any further discussion? Uh all those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item thirteen, discuss and consider replat of block five A, five B. Five, six A, six B, uh block three of Kickaboo Estates located on Van Zandt County Road forty-two oh seven and precinct four.
Uh yes, this is mine. We sent this day to day over thirty days ago for people to discuss it. Um. He made more lots, he went from two lots to four lots. He kept it within the family. He's gone through all the plating processes, all the paperwork, paid all his fees. Had to certify the letter signed from his neighbors and uh. Cause then everything he needed to do in our request to approve this replat for the following purposes.
Second, person.
All right, motion made, second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider accepting. Recommendation of jail architectural selection committee to hire an architectural firm.
Yes, this be uh, we met last week with three architectural firms and uh. I think we've come to a decision who we wanna, wanna hire, but we'd like the court's permission to uh, to uh. Allow us to to hire an architectural firm. So I motion to let the uh, the five people that were on the committee to hire. An architectural firm for the jail and uh. Before.
And uh.
I think it needs to be that committee recommends the um, and the court hires somebody, not the committee.
So a motion that the committee recommend of.
The committee recommends for hiring.
The committee recommends to hiring. Uh Burn, Burns Architectural Services.
We are, as a committee, uh are. Our county is in a kind of desperate desperate uh situation on our jail. We've got to do some major. We've got to do something at the jail uh. That's m- major, major repairs, upgrading and stuff out there to be done. This is coming from the. Texas Jail Commission has given us some guidance on this. And uh, so we formed a committee and the committee looked at. Uh architects, our architect companies to give us some ideas of what's going on and. And we, we scored, the committee scored them and then uh we narrowed it down to three and then we personally interviewed. Three, uh the, the, the top three. And so that's where Brandon is coming up. The, the committee has a. Unanimously uh. Picked uh Burns and so. I'll make a motion to go to Burns uh.
Are you seconding the motion?
Yeah, motion is. And just for transparent, the committee was made up of myself, Keith, the sheriff. Um uh Tonda, the D A, and and Kenny.
Absolute pleasure serving from that committee. Everyone was so committed to doing a good job, doing the research. Um being very thorough. Um and in the end, as he said, our decision was unanimous to, to all of us, there was. One firm that that met our needs, although any other public could have done the job. There was one firm that. That just stood out as having the ability to meet our needs and and um help us through. The project if we decide to undertake a project. Hiring an architect does not mean. We're building a jail, does not mean we are modeling a jail, does not mean any of that. It means that we apply consultants to help us make a decision.
That's, that's what I was fixing to say. That then, we've got to have somebody to give us numbers. And uh so we, we can have not just numbers, but accurate numbers and just grab something up here and say this is what it is. Uh so that's, that's a process that we're starting uh so we can uh share this information with the public. And and make a decision in the future.
Do we have an estimation on what the architecture services costs will be at this point?
That is a, a very, very good question, Commissioner, and we can't because. The, the law in procuring professional services does not allow us to ask that or consider that. We, we do the R Q, which we did, advertised it as we're supposed to, five firms responded. Um listed all their qualifications. We scored those objectively. Decided, and and the committee has the ability to set the cutoff as to who have been interviewed wherever wanted. There were three. There were three that we decided to interview. And so we are allowed to sit down and we spent almost two hours with each one of them. Um, sit down, talk to them, ask them any question we want, except what is your fee? Um, so no, we don't. Now, if, if, if the court authorizes us to engage in negotiations regarding fee, now is when we can do that stuff. And we can still back out at that point. Um, but now we're allowed, now we pick, because it's a professional services contract, we are allowed to pick on qualifications. We don't have to accept a little bit uh or any bit. We pick on qualifications. Then we enter the negotiation process. Um, and if we don't like that price, we say, no.
Thank you.
I appreciate the committee work out done for all of you done. Uh, unfortunately, in my book, all I got is a line that says, discuss and consider recommendation of jail architecture selection committee to hire an architectural firm. There is no supporting paperwork even has a name listed. And I understand what you're actually asking for a commission to enter into contract negotiations with said firm. Can you tell me again the name of the firm?
Burns Architects. I'll see you. And, and part of that, Commissioner, is that it, it, again, we're supposed to keep our work, the committee's work private until um, we make our recommendations report.
We have a motion to second already, haven't we?
We have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed like sign, motion passes. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider authorizing the county judge to sign an annual support agreement with Southern Software for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. I think Scott was going to discuss this.
I submitted the uh, the invoice and the auditor's office said there was an increase and we don't have a current, we, we won't have an agreement after October thirty-first. So apparently the original agreement got mailed to the sheriff's office and emailed to Sheriff Hendricks. It hasn't been here in a little while. So I corrected that information for Sheriff Carter and asked that next year it'd be mailed to my address and to some other and uh told him that in January we'll correct that to that sheriff. So there is a one percent increase in, in the cost uh going forward. So that was a consideration for to, we need an agreement. Just for all the sheriff's office software.
Okay.
As the jail runs, everything.
The computer dispatching runs on.
Yeah, the whole of it.
Uh, R and M reported for sheriff's office, the jail reporting everything, all the computerized stuff and they track everything on out there. So it was, so it's I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Thank you, Scott.
Uh, this uh, agenda item sixteen, sorry for jumping in there, um, is a special road use indemnity agreement permit. Uh, this isn't, this isn't exactly necessary, but what happened was, is that the uh, there's a new school being built in my area and it's going to be a pretty substantial amount of construction. And I asked um, some of the folks if they, if anybody had a, a special road use indemnity agreement permit uh and, and uh, you, you know, a template that's been used in the past. Um, and uh, and, and I, I didn't, I didn't get one, so I, I drafted one, took into consideration the special uh road use indemnity agreement permit from surrounding counties and, and kind of amalgamated uh and uh and put this together. Um, the uh purpose of it is if uh if an organization or a school or any of the rest of those begin to build a, a uh build something, they're going to have an increased amount of traffic in the area. It's going to be our ask that the general contractor uh put a bond together, have insurance, uh, do things that are necessary to make sure that they don't burden our road system and, and cause additional costs to the county. So uh, I put this together and I wanted to bring it to the commissioners i- if we wanted to adopt this, uh, or if we just wanted to continue to use uh, you know, some type of, of uh road use indemnity agreement or, or, or permit um that uh, you know, that each one uses and goes through. I didn't know whether, so that's why I brought it, because I wanted to make it a little more official, provide it um to the rest of the, the group if you wanted to use it.
I think we do need something. Like, made up.
Uh, we do. I, I would personally prefer a workshop on this so that we can get more input and legal advice too from our attorney to make sure that we, we definitely need something. I agree. Uh, but we, we
That works for me. I, I don't, I don't mind at all. I
Yes.
I, I certainly wanted to put this out there and uh, and make it available.
Now, is there a motion to table?
I'll motion to table and have a workshop in the future.
All right, is there a second?
Second, person.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion passes. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider Texas Historical Commission grant awarded to Van Zandt County for a full restoration of county courthouse, consider acceptance, rejection, or request for extension of deadline to November twenty-first, twenty twenty-five for the funding agreement. And I'll just give a brief, brief history.
Judge.
Yes.
I guess you go, go ahead. I'm going to say I think we should come back to this after executive session. I'm not saying table it. I'm saying coming back to, let's come back to this after executive session.
And the reason being, because of all these people are here.
But there's some things and then we just discuss in executive session that does pertain to this.
Okay. Then, then I guess we will, if there's something that pertains to this, to an executive session, then we will, we will go into executive session now and come back and discuss.
Do you, well, uh, Tom, have you seen a problem there?
No, I see. The, the, the agenda is not to accept the grant for the executive just to ask for an extension times or have people sit.
Well, it can be any. It can accept, reject, or extend.
It's all, yeah. Any three of those choices. Yes.
Yeah, no, I don't go, I don't see any problems going back to this after the executive session.
All right. Then we will, we will go into executive session now at ten oh four and uh so we will need you to clear the courtroom and we will come